The meeting is ordered at 5:00 PM. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Moore. I am responsible for facilitating this part of the meeting, which is our organizational meeting. And we will begin with the pledge, as we celebrated Veterans Day last week. Mr. Meyer, we'd be honored if you'd lead us in the pledge.
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Our first order of business is to introduce Judge Victoria Griffin, Judge for the 19th Circuit Court of Florida, serving students and families of Indian River County. We invite her to the podium to swear in. Our two new board members, just as process, you'll see our podium is behind the dais. We are sitting here, continuing to honor social distancing as best we can in the midst of a pandemic.
Nothing like putting me on the spot.
Absolutely.
All right. But before I get started, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. It's always an honor to be asked to join such a great time with you all. It's very odd compared to other years, and I appreciate that. But at the same time, I look forward to how it was before. And to the new members, I just want to congratulate you on your election, and thank you for taking an interest and caring for the children of our community. It's very commendable, and I appreciate that. I want to thank you, and good luck to you on your term. Okay?
Absolutely.
All right.
With that, thank you, Judge Griffin. Please help me welcome Dr. Peggy Jones, school board member, District 3, to the podium.
All right, let me make sure I got the right one. All right, if you'll please raise your right hand to be sworn in. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government of the United States
the Constitution and government of the United States
and of the state of Florida
and of the state of Florida
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
to hold office
to hold office
under the Constitution
under the Constitution
of the state
of the state
and that I will
and I will
well and faithfully perform
well and faithfully perform
the duties of school board member, District 3
the duties of school board member, District 3
on which I am now about to enter
on which I am now about to enter
so help me God.
so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ms. Jones.
And I would like to afford each board member the opportunity to say a few words after they sign away the -- after they sign.
I just want to thank everyone in this community and this district. I really consider this a privilege to be here. I love this community and district, and I will do my absolute best each and every day for the students of Indian River County. Thank you.
And now, as board member, Dr. Jones takes her seat, please help me welcome to the podium, Mr. Brian Barefoot, District 5.
Hello again. All right, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government
the Constitution and government
of the United States
of the United States
and of the state of Florida
and of the state of Florida
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
to hold office
to hold office
under the Constitution of the state
under the Constitution of the state
and that I will well
and I will well
and faithfully perform
and faithfully perform
the duties of
the duties of
school board member, District 5
school board member, District 5
on which I am now about to enter
of which I am now about to enter
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
So how much -- how long do I have to speak? You've got 20, 25 minutes?
Absolutely not, sir. Let's get that timer.
You know, after watching some of these meetings on YouTube, I figured I have at least an hour and 20 minutes, and we'll get out of here by midnight. At any rate, seriously, thank you all for coming. I look forward to working with my new colleagues. I think we hopefully will have some fun and will make a difference in the lives of the kids. So thank you very much.
Want to also thank Judge Griffin for taking the time out of your day in the midst of a pandemic and coming in and supporting the school district of Indian River County. We truly appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Maddox, who's going to help facilitate some pictures before we move on to the rest of our meeting. Ms. Maddox.
If we could have both of our new board members, well, let's just -- the whole board together first. We can do that, right in front of the dais.
With masks, of course.
Yes, please. Just center sort of mean the flag with masks. Okay, um, do you think that I might have to add? Okay, um, because I'm ordering that chair as soon as I can.
Should we move them out, right?
Um, yes, actually, if these two chairs could just be moved. Okay, everyone just take a little bit of a step to the right. Okay?
Can I pull this one?
Hold on, let's. There you go. That's fine. Okay, ready, one, two, and three. One more. One, two, and three. Okay. Dr. Moore, would you join, please? All right, that's important, that's more important.
Yeah, I understand.
All right. One, two, one, two, and three.
Official picture, this looks like a meeting picture.
Your mask is not colored for.
I know, I am.
One, two, and three. One, two, and three. Three, four. One, two, and three. More. Okay. Now, each newborn member with their family. And we'll do individuals with families.
As the board members take their seats, I have two orders of business prior to relinquishing the gavel, the first of which is to elect a chair to the school board. The process that we will follow is I will call, I will open up the floor for nominations, and listen for nominations, and record them in the order in which they are received, and then we will move to a vote. So at this time, I will open up the floor for nominations to the position of Chair of the School District of Indian River County.
I'm -- I'm sorry.
Who goes first?
I have Ms.
You spoke. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Terry Barrenborg.
I'd like to nominate Brian Barefoot.
Any more nominations? The first name I heard was Ms. Barrenborg. Ms. Barrenborg, do you accept this nomination?
I would, if that's the -- of what the board wants.
Mr. Barefoot, do you accept this nomination?
Yeah.
Absolutely. So the -- what we will do is move to a vote, hearing that there are no more names to be called, and I'll pause for a second, just in case there may be. If not, I'll ask for a motion to vote on Ms. Terry Barrenborg.
I so moved.
Second by Mr. Barefoot. We're not going to speak to the motions. We're just going to take a vote. All in favor of Terry Barrenborg serving as the Chair, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
We have, what I recorded is one in favor, two nays. The next name to consider is Mr. Brian Barefoot. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Dr. Schiff.
Second.
Second by Ms. Terry Barrenborg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I heard two votes. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Two nos, but did I get a vote from -- so at this point, we will repeat the process.
Point of order. Ms. DeGresta, can someone not vote? If there's only four votes, I think you have to vote, right?
Yes, there should be five votes recorded for each of the nominations. So for both Mrs. Barrenborg and for Mr. Barefoot, we need all five votes recorded.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
If you do not respond, that's assumed as a yes, according to Robert's rules.
Yes, Mrs. -- that is correct, but it's the individual running the meeting calls the ending vote. So
Okay.
it's up to Dr. Moore to call that what he heard as the vote.
Thank you. So let's take that vote again. So do I have a motion for Ms. Terry Barrenborg?
I move so moved.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Barefoot. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
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 Okay, I have one in favor, and four nays. Is that correct? Three nays. Four nays. Now we move to Mr. Brian Barefoot. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
So moved.
I heard a first by Ms. Barrenborg, second by Ms. Barrenborg. All in favor?
Aye.
Second by Dr. Schiff.
Dr. Schiff, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Aye.
I'm sorry, we were having a sidebar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I hear one, two, three ayes. Four?
Me?
Yes.
No, nay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Four yeses, one no. Ladies and gentlemen, the Chair of the School Board of Indian River County is Mr. Brian Barefoot.
Congratulations.
At this time, I will repeat the process. Do I have a nomination for Vice Chair of the School District of Indian River County?
I nominate Terry Barrenborg.
Terry Barrenborg.
Second.
We have a second. Still taking nominations, though. Hearing none, I will call for a motion to vote for Ms. Terry Barrenborg to serve as the Vice Chair of the School District of Indian River County. Need a motion?
I so moved.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Four, one. Ladies and gentlemen, the Vice Chair of the School District of Indian River County is Ms. Terry Barrenborg.
Get this thing down.
At this time, we're going to take a short recess, so our Chair can meet with the Secretary of the School Board, organize seats, and then we'll reconvene the meeting. 5:15.
All right, at 5:22, I'm reconvening the organizational meeting. The next order of business would be citizen input, but tonight there is no citizen input for this part of the meeting. The next part of the meeting is -- meetings will be held once a month. These meetings are held the third Tuesdays of each month at 6:00 PM for the business portion of the meeting. The board is able to schedule meetings as it determines necessary. A list of specific meeting dates for December 2020 through November 2021 is attached. Can I have a motion to establish dates and times?
I make a motion?
I'll make a second.
Moore, you had a?
I do, when we get to discussion.
Go ahead. We have a motion and a second.
So generally, the way we've done it in the past is that the person who makes the motion gets to speak to their motion, the second gets to speak, and then we open for discussion.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if that's because we have to do it that way. It's just the way we've traditionally done it.
Well, the -- yeah.
All right.
And you would write down there in those lines, who made the first, the second, even though we have Nancy, but...
Nancy's backing me up.
Yeah.
Get to work, Nancy.
Okay. Motion? Jack, you want to speak to it?
I have nothing to say. Thank you. I'm done.
Second?
Yes, I'd like to speak to it.
Okay.
I noticed that these are once a month instead of twice a month, and they are the third Tuesday of the month. Just curious if that conflicts. I'm sorry. I was just curious if that conflicts with any other schedules, because I thought it did. Mrs. Rosario, don't you serve on the EDC Committee? It meets third Tuesday of the month? No, that's in the morning. Oh, it says 3:30 in the afternoon on the sheet that we got. No, but I'm an alternate on that. Okay, but somebody from the -- There's no conflict. I don't have a conflict. There's no conflict. Okay, but somebody from the board has to serve on it, correct? Yes. Okay. But I don't have a conflict. I know you don't, but somebody on the board, we're going to do that next. And so that -- we have somebody from our board representing us on that committee. That committee meets on the third Tuesday of the month at 3:30. That's why I asked. Called EDC, Economic Development Committee?
Yep.
Correct?
The only way that that would be a conflict is if there was some reason to have a special meeting called that afternoon.
Like a workshop?
Right.
Okay. So, but that's what I'm saying. It is a conflict, because we traditionally met the second and the fourth Tuesday of the month. That's why I'm asking. The superintendent would like, what, the second Tuesday of the month to be workshop?
Let me just clarify.
Sure.
The Economic Development Council, I was the alternate. It was Mrs. Zork who served on that. It says here, last year, Mrs. Zork served her fourth year with Mrs. Rosario as her alternate.
Right.
Duties include attending monthly meetings on the third Tuesday of the month at 3:30 PM. It never -- I don't know if it was a conflict for Mrs. Zork. I never had to actually attend it. So I don't -- she made it work somehow.
Yeah, I just noticed it was a conflict, so that's why I'm bringing it up. That's all. Like you said, if he wants a workshop, that would be an extra workshop date then, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And Dr. Moore and I were talking about this, because obviously, this is fewer meetings than in the past. But, and if there were to be a workshop, or a second workshop, the best time to have it ideally, instead of 1:00 in the afternoon, start at 4:00, let's say, assuming it could be conducted. Now, that potentially becomes a conflict, and we'll just have to work it out.
Mr. Barefoot, if I may?
Yes.
I actually do have concern about this. We have historically, for a whole number of reasons, and I'll say those as succinctly as I can. Number one, we've historically met twice a month on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. Many of us have organized our calendars accordingly, and while we know that it may change now, it's always been that. So for me, I plan a number of other things around that presumed schedule. But that's just me. That's not the rest of the board. What I'm more concerned about, if I'm -- what I'm more concerned about is two things. It's been tried in the past, going to one meeting a month, and it wasn't successful. I'm concerned, and Dr. Moore knows all of my concerns. I've discussed this with him, so this is not a surprise to him that I'm sharing this. In going to one meeting a month, I am concerned, particularly with new board members, that we lose time with each other, we lose time with the public, and we lose time to have conversations that we cannot otherwise have, except when we're sitting here. I'm concerned about cutting that time down. What happens, what has happened in the past is we often have to add lots of extra meetings. I'm concerned, number one, that we're again going to have to do that. Number two, in the past, there, prior to Dr. Moore's arrival, we had, on the second Tuesday of the month, we had board discussion for boards, for the board itself to come together on topics that we wanted to discuss with one another, that were not superintendent-driven, but were concerns that we had, that we, as a board, wanted to discuss, that we can't otherwise discuss, except in the sunshine and being publicly noticed. I would like to be able to go back to that. I would like to be able to go back to having board discussions on the second Tuesday. I'd like to have superintendent workshops on the fourth Tuesday. Because particularly with new board members coming on, I think we need more face time, not less. And I understand Dr. Moore's concern about the stress that that puts on staff to prepare for these meetings, and we've talked about that. But I don't think, at this moment in time, with this board's, well, this board's history and its projected future, that we're yet at a -- that we're yet ready to be able to do that. I personally am in favor of keeping the second and fourth Tuesdays, and in the afternoons, having a board discussion on the second Tuesday and having a superintendent workshop on the fourth Tuesday. That would be my proposal. And if I need to make a motion to counterpropose, I'm happy to do that following discussion. In fact, I'm actually just going to do that. Can I make a motion, Suzanne?
Yes.
An amendment? An amendment. I'd like to amend the motion on the table, to stick to our current schedule of board business meetings on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. And I'd like to add that we have board discussion on the second Tuesday, and we have superintendent workshop on the fourth Tuesday, both in the afternoon.
Still in discussion?
That was a motion. I'd like to second that for purpose of discussion. The person with the second, Mr. Barefoot, is the one who gets the next comment.
The fourth Tuesday of the month does not work for me.
Okay, but the person with the second is the one who gets the next comment. I seconded her motion.
Go ahead.
I don't disagree with you. I think that I was kind of taken aback a little bit by the proposal. I can, however, see that our board meetings are, minus the last few that we had, that we had incredible amounts of discussion for obvious purposes. But other than that, our board meetings have gone very smoothly. We haven't had a lot on our agenda lately. And I attribute that to how well Dr. Moore prepares us prior to our board meetings. We meet with Dr. Moore individually, and we are so well-prepared, at least, you know, two weeks in advance. I've even seen items sometimes three weeks in advance in preparation for the board meetings, which is really a great place to be, that our board meetings can move that smoothly when we finally meet. So I appreciate that much, and I can see how we can, we might be able to function at one meeting a month, one board meeting a month. So I'm still on the fence, because I hear what you're saying about having two meetings, I think that's very important. I don't know if it's needed at the rate that we've been working, and how we've been working. However, I will support, fully support, ensuring that we go back to our board discussion times. When we met and we added the board discussion times, it was incredibly helpful for myself as a new board member, and it might be extremely beneficial for Mr. Barefoot and, 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 do you prefer Peggy or Dr.?
Dr. Jones.
Dr. Jones, sorry. Thank you. And Dr. Jones. Because you get to talk, you get to add items to the agenda. You are a part of what gets put on that agenda for items that you would like to discuss with your fellow board members, and then we can move and give Dr. Moore direction from there. So I definitely would like to add our discussion sessions back in. That's important. We have to do the work of the board, and still respect the work that the district of our staff members, and what they bring to the table, to help us get our work done. So maybe board members in your, when you provide your input, maybe we can talk about keeping one meeting and adding our discussion sessions. Maybe that might, you know, continue to help, you know, move us in the right direction, still give us a little bit of change, and then allow us to revisit adding that extra meeting back in, in the future. So I'll just leave it, open it up for discussion.
Dr. Jones wants to speak, and then I'll respond to that, if I may.
Well, I've seen it in the district, with two meetings a month, and also one meeting a month. And I think as long as the communication is a two-way street, not only with the district, but with our, our parents and community, it can work. I think board discussion is essential, especially in this kind of year, which is very, very challenging. I would just say, if, if it's a board voting that we go to one meeting a month, one workshop, that we really look at that. Is it working? Is it not working? Do we need to move to something else? You know, again, a challenging year, so I would just watch it very, very closely to make sure that we are being open to our community, to our students, our families, and our public.
If I may, may I respond to Mrs. Rosario's comments?
Sure.
I hear what you're saying, and to be, but I think we're doing it in reverse order. I think rather than changing everything and seeing how it goes, I think we keep it with the new board, and when the new board is firmly established, when it is clear that things are swimming along, we are in unprecedented times that change almost every day. We have no idea. In the beginning of COVID, and while we had other issues, we kept having to call special meetings all the time. It's much harder to schedule those, particularly for those of us who have a lot of other things going on. I understand that Mr. Barefoot is now saying he has a conflict on the fourth Tuesday of the month, which, in honesty, I'm disappointed to hear, I didn't know that. I've organized myself around the schedule we've had for two years now. So we're now getting into a series of other comments. And to Dr. Jones's point, which I agree with, I'm concerned about limiting citizen input. I'm concerned about limiting the time that the citizen has to communicate, citizens have to communicate with the board. That's one of our primary functions. When we cut to one meeting a month, and we change the date of it, we're also asking the community to follow along, who are now used to, for as long as I've been paying attention, it's been the second and fourth Tuesday. We're asking them to now get on board with it's the third Tuesday, and that they only have that one time to come talk to us. Personally, I think that's insufficient. It may prove down the road, as we're swimming along, we get COVID handled, we get academic achievement handled, we get our curriculum in order, we get equity in order, we get all of these things swimming along, then I'd be delighted to revisit. None of us wants to spend more time in meetings than we have to. I'd be delighted to revisit at that time, but I think this is the wrong time.
May I speak? Question, I know that the reason why we bring this list up tonight and vote on it is because it has to be submitted to the state, correct? So it would be difficult to make a list then and amend it later, or not difficult? Can I ask Suzanne? Ms. DiAgresta, sorry.
Mr. Barefoot, may I respond to the question? Mrs. Barrenborg, yes, the school board can certainly amend its meeting schedule later if it so wishes, but we do need to adopt a meeting schedule tonight, and if something happens in the future, you need to amend, or you need to amend at the next meeting, we can certainly do that, but we do need to adopt a meeting schedule this evening.
Okay.
I'd like to make a suggestion. As I said, unfortunately, actually, in, in meetings, as long as they take via Zoom, there's a lot of things you can have done in a day. And I happen to have a, I'm on a bank board in Boston that meets on the fourth Tuesday of every month. It's a morning meeting. It doesn't conflict here unless I have to be there. And the problem is that I chair the audit committee, and I have to be there, not now, but who knows when we might actually be able to go places. So it's a potential conflict. Now, if, if it's, and I don't know whether it's acceptable, you, Ms. DiAgresta, you can answer this. I mean, there's no way I can get from Boston back here if I had to be there. That doesn't mean that Mrs. Barrenborg couldn't chair the meeting, and I could participate via Zoom phone if I can't be here. That's just, addresses my particular issue. I guess what I'd like to suggest is that we approve this, since we have to approve something tonight, that we approve what's being proposed, that between now and the next meeting, each of us maybe communicate directly with Dr. Moore.
Nancy.
Or Nancy, to be certain that we, that whatever conflicts we may or may not have, and then come back, working with Nancy, to propose an amended schedule on the, I think the next meeting's December 8th. If that's all right, because, and I think everybody's making, making good points here. And I can argue both sides of this. I, for one, like fewer meetings. On the other hand, there's, there's a rhythm to these meetings, and as somebody pointed out, the last few meetings have gone much more smoothly perhaps than some of the others have, and once you get into a rhythm, and a lot of it is getting used to one another. And, you know, some people like to talk a lot, and other people don't like to talk a lot. But for now, if it's acceptable to everyone, I would like to have what's been, been proposed and seconded, accept it with the understanding that we will revisit it at the next meeting, and have each of us provide some input to Nancy, and we can, individually with Nancy, or we can bring it back, or she can bring, or I'll bring it back after working with her for any changes next, next meeting, December 8th.
Mr. Barefoot?
Yes.
Question. On here, it says the next meeting is December 15th, so we would actually have to amend this to say December 8th and December 15th then?
Well, then it's December, I thought it was December 8th. It's December 15th?
Well, it was, it was projected to be December 8th until this change happened.
All right, so now it's December, so, so it would be the December 15th meeting that we would bring it back.
Mr. Barefoot, the absolute last thing I want to do, at our first meeting together, is have a disagreement. But I have to say, I feel very strongly about this moving forward, and I, I don't know how my fellow board members are going to vote. This is the, this is the time we get to be with one another. This is the time we get to talk. This is, while it is the superintendent's opportunity to bring matters before the board, it's our board meeting. It's our board business meeting. And I appreciate why the superintendent has asked for this change, but as a, I have seen this, as, as Dr. Jones alluded to, I've seen this happen in the past. And what happened was the meetings went on till 9:00, 10:00, 11:00, 12:00 o'clock, because there was so much to do in one meeting. Now, that's changed, as Mrs. Rosario said, because we're much better prepared now. And in the past, we often didn't know what was on the agenda, you know, until Nancy posted it seven days before, which was highly ineffective. That doesn't happen anymore. But I'm really looking forward to getting, to getting to work with you both. I'm really looking forward to us getting in a rhythm of this board, of moving forward effectively, and efficiently, and productively. And I'm not ready, really not ready to say that the way we do that is by spending less time together rather than more, and having less interaction with the public rather than more. And I realize I'm, I'm beating the horse here, but it, there are a few times when I feel as strongly as I do about this, and about our time together, and how seriously we all take it.
May I?
Mrs. All right, yes.
Mrs. DiAgresta, I think if I saw your body language, you may have had a comment to add. Am I correct?
I was just actually having a sidebar with Dr. Moore, that we need to take, we need to take a vote on the amendment first, and then we would take a vote on the underlying main motion. So, yes, we were just.
This is Dr. Schiff's motion?
Correct, but Dr. Moore and I were just discussing the process, to be sure that we were following the right process.
Okay. I have to, I'll, I'll make this last comment. I have to say that I wasn't prepared to change my thought on this, but I can, I can, I can support what you're saying, Dr. Schiff, because this is our time to work. This is our time to get the work done, and this is our only time to meet and to talk and to discuss. And so I, I can respect that, and I can support it.
I move to reconsider the motion.
We already have a motion on the floor.
I move to reconsider the motion. I can do that after amended motion, correct?
Correct. That you're asking to reconsider the main motion, or the amended?
And the second. I have something that might fit for both. I just thought of something. I would like to consider us meeting twice in December, the 8th and the 15th, twice in January, and then in December, vote on how we move forward. So that we would, instead of having a problem at the very beginning, that way we've got a month under our belt of working two meetings, and if we need to, two more meetings in January, and then decide if we need to go to one meeting or not. So in other words, we can keep the meeting here, the first, the first motion, and my reconsidered motion is to add December 8th and January, whatever that second Tuesday in January is.
And that would coincide with the proposed workshop that's.
Right.
That's already part of the first motion.
Right. And that way, we start with what Dr. Schiff is asking for, and we move to possibly, we keep these dates, and then we, at that point, we can amend and go back to the two meetings, or we can keep it going with the one meeting, or go further with the one meeting.
Can I?
I don't.
Can I make a suggestion? Although, I don't know if we need a motion in a second before I speak to it.
It needs to have a second.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
I'll second for discussion, and I'd like to discuss.
Sure.
I appreciate Mrs. Barrenborg's effort at working this out, because I think it's important we work it out. I would, however, I think it's, I would rather go in the other direction. Rather than planning for two meetings in December and January, and then presuming we're going to one, I'd rather presume we're sticking at two, and if in January or February, we realize we only need one, we're swimming along, we're doing great, everything's getting handled really efficiently, we can at that time move to cut back to one meeting.
Basically what you said.
No. I think Mrs. Barrenborg said that we would decide in December, but I hear Dr. Schiff saying is that we would make the decision in January. It doesn't matter.
Or February, or March, or whenever it is. We, the presumption is two meetings.
Later than December.
And in moving along, if we find that two meetings, that we don't need that much time together, that when, that when we decide that, we can revisit, and we can come back, we can decide to go to one meeting a month. But rather than we're two here, and we're one here, and we remember in January, remember in February, let's make a decision tonight, and we always have the opportunity to revisit it in, whenever it is we decide that this is no longer effective and efficient.
Yeah. So, now that you have an amended, I know you're trying to keep up with all this. All right. And you have my reconsidered motion. So, is the original, or the amended, or the reconsidered have anything to do with the dates, or just the amount of times that we meet? Because I think there is a question of the dates that we meet, and then there's a question of how many times we meet. I think there are two things here. Correct?
Well, sort of.
Okay.
There's a bunch of different motions.
Right.
There's the motion that we meet once, and we meet on the third Tuesday.
Correct.
There's the motion that we meet on the second and the fourth.
Correct.
And then what we do in the afternoon as a business meeting and as a superintendent's meeting, I'm willing to go back and, and break that up. And then there's your amended motion that says, let's do two meetings for Jan, for December and January, with the presumption that we'll cut to one in February and ongoingly. Those are the three things I hear on the table right now.
Correct.
I think that's a lot of motions.
That is.
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we withdraw all the motions and start over?
Works for me.
I can withdraw my motion.
If we're withdrawing and starting again, I'm willing to withdraw, and then we withdraw that, and we.
And I will withdraw the initial motion, which was actually, Jackie, you were the one that.
She made the.
No, I made the second. Mrs., Dr. Schiff made the motion, and I seconded.
No, this was on the original motion, the Wednesday's one.
The original motion was made by Jackie.
You motioned the Wednesdays for discussion.
Seconded it.
So Jackie would have to withdraw.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, let's start over.
Who knew this would be so complicated?
Why don't we meet on December 25th? And New Year's Day after a night of celebration? So.
I'd like to make a motion to meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month for our business meetings.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I've been in the district, and sometimes one meeting a month works with workshops. Sometimes you need two meetings. You know, as long as the discussion is open and everything. I wouldn't mind starting a few months with the two meetings a month and then going from there to see where we are as a board, you know, working with our community, where we are with our school district. As we all know, lots of work, lots and lots of work to prepare for board meetings and workshops. And I understand what Dr. Schiff is saying about this is our time to communicate, and that's absolutely wonderful. But I believe we can become an efficient board. I believe we can serve our people and our students and our district and our staff. Like I said, I wouldn't mind starting with a couple as we just move forward, whatever that motion may be, Mr. Barefoot, you know, starting maybe in December, January, February, and see where we are. And we have to be fluid with this, you know. Sometimes another thing will come up, and we'll say, we need a special meeting, and that happens. But I've seen effective boards make it work for a month, and I've seen boards not even make it work for twice a month. So whatever we do, I myself would just like to start out with a couple, a few months, to see where we go.
Does your motion, right now, if you're going to the second and the fourth Tuesday, the workshop that was being proposed was also going to be on the second Tuesday?
It's, I believe, on the fourth. It has, since Dr. Moore has been here, we've had workshop on both the second and the fourth. Prior to Dr. Moore being here, we only had workshop on the fourth, and we had board discussion on the second. So I, to simplify the motion, I took that part out of it for now. That's a separate discussion.
We're just talking about the business meeting.
Yeah, that's a separate discussion right now. For ease, for simplicity's sake, we're only talking about the business meeting. We can then come back to board discussions and superintendent workshops, but let's keep this motion clean on just this one, on just the business meetings.
All right, unless there's no more discussion, I'm happy to call the question. All in favor of Mrs. Schiff's, Dr. Schiff's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Was that a 4-1 or a 5-0?
5-0 is fine. My vote was, would have been irrelevant, so may as well make it unanimous if you can. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Now, workshops, whether it's superintendent or board workshops, we need a motion, and if you want to make your motion, that whatever it is, why don't you, you're on a roll here.
I move that we, well, before I do that, Dr. Moore, do you prefer the second or the fourth Tuesday for a workshop?
Through the chair, the second would be fine.
You prefer the second? Okay. So I move that we have superintendent workshops on the after, the second Tuesday of the month, and we hold the fourth Tuesday for board discussion.
I'll second that for discussion, please.
Go ahead.
Would we be, would the board be flexible to use that fourth Tuesday and give it up to Dr. Moore if we have some pressing issues now that, you know, everything is so fluid? We can always use that fourth Tuesday to add on if he needs another superintendent workshop.
Absolutely.
Also, I'd like to, if we don't have any discussion, because sometimes we don't have anything to discuss, then we don't have to meet at all. All right.
But what I observe happened is that when we stopped having those board discussions, which was also around the time of, you know, COVID and everything went haywire, there were a lot of things that got left hanging that we haven't revisited, that as a board, I think we need to go back and finish those conversations, and they've been suspended in the era of COVID. With the new board, I'd like to go back to having our opportunity to talk about important issues ourselves, not driven by the superintendent, but actually driven by what we want to talk to each other about.
Further comments? I'd like to amend your motion and flip the sequence. I think it makes more sense to have the board being the first meeting, in other words, before the second. The first meeting of the month, and the superintendent's workshop preceding the fourth.
If I may, personally, I don't care which way it goes. So, but I just want to have both. And I had asked the superintendent his preference, but I think it was a negligible preference. My concern is also what you expressed about your availability on the fourth Tuesday. And that's kind of up to you, if you have to call in for either a superintendent workshop or potentially a board discussion. That's more about your availability, I think, and what you're comfortable with. I don't really care which direction.
My thought was having our, let's say, the board workshop first, is if there's something that we discuss at our workshop that needs to be communicated to Dr. Moore, that he can work into a follow-up workshop prior to the second business meeting, to me, it just makes more sense.
Yes, but we need to consider asking him, because this is his, this would be his workshop.
Well, he just said he was indifferent.
No problem.
At the will of the bar, at the will of the board, yes.
So can I, is it that Brian amended, or can I amend my motion?
At the moment, Mr. Barefoot has an amendment on the table.
I withdraw my amendment. You can amend your motion.
I'll amend my motion to have the superintendent's workshop on the fourth Tuesday and board discussion on the second Tuesday.
All right.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
All right, success. We've made decisions together as a board.
That only took 54, 55 minutes. God help us. You can tell I come from the corporate sector, so. All right, the second issue that has to be discussed is a motion. The Joseph N. Delp Jr. Teacher Education Center, TEC, located at the J.A. Thompson Administrative Center at 6557 St., Vero Beach, Florida 32967, is a meeting place unless public interest can best be served by meeting elsewhere. Can I have a motion for the meeting place?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
And second?
You'll probably be happy with how fast this one goes.
Is there, I was thinking about Joe's Bar and Grill, actually. I know this is supposed to be serious, but.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Next. Indian River County, this is the Indian River County Commission's Metropolitan Planning Organization Committee Member and an alternate for this voting position. Last year, as I think we talked about this before, Mrs. Justice was the member and Mrs. Rosario was the alternate. Does anybody want to volunteer to be the member? Well, since I'm sitting in Mrs. Justice's seat.
No. Oh, it's the district.
The district.
I apologize.
That's what I meant. I'm happy to take her place as the member.
I can remain alternate.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we need a motion for that, do we? Okay. The next. This is the Indian River County Commission's Economic Development Council, the EDC, committee member and alternate for this four-year voting position. Last year, Mrs. Zork served her fourth year with Mrs. Rosario as alternate. This is where we had the potential conflict that you pointed out.
Right.
When we were working on-
That's the only reason why I brought that up. Sorry.
That's what got us started off track right away.
No, sorry.
All right.
I saw a conflict, had to bring it up.
Yep, okay. So is anyone dying to serve as the voting member of the EDC?
I will volunteer.
Dr. Jones is dying to join that.
I can, I, and Mrs. Rosario, you were the alternate. Do you want to continue?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Next is the Indian River County Planning and Zoning Commission with an alternate for this four-year non-voting position. Last year, Mrs. Berenberg served for two years with Dr. Schiff as the alternate.
I'll continue. That's fine.
Dr. Schiff?
Sure, I'll stay alternate.
You're becoming very accommodative after you beat the rest of us up.
That's my job. Thank you for noticing.
Keep a sense of humor, right?
Always.
Okay.
I used to think I was the only one. I'm glad to have company on a sense of humor.
Okay. This is the City of Vero Beach Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a non-voting position. Last year, Mrs. Zork, we don't need an alternate, Mrs. Zork served. This, this is, this is another first, a third, no, we were talking, let's say, the third Tuesday, trying to think of any other conflicts.
This is Thursday.
This is Thursday.
This is a Thursday. Anybody dying to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
For the city. I do the county one.
Oh, I'm so friendly with those people. I'll volunteer. Nancy, you just got to remind people who, or to where, when. Thank you. Okay. Next is the City of Sebastian Planning and Zoning Commission, three-year term, non-voting. I know who's going to volunteer for this.
And who did you have in mind, sir? That's fine. I'll stay on it.
Thank you. City of Felsmore Planning and Zoning Commission, non-voting position. This was you last year, Mrs. Berenberg.
It was last year, it was Mrs. Justice.
I'll serve on that.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, she served as the alternate, and then she served.
Sorry, so Dr. Jones is going to take your spot on that. And the next one is City of Indian River Shores Planning and Zoning, one year, non-voting. I'll do that. It's right in my backyard. They never meet anyways.
You're not supposed to tell us that.
Actually, once in a while, they do. Executive Roundtable, committee member for this voting position. Last year, Mrs. Berenberg served.
Yeah, I have a conflict, and I had to have Mrs. Justice substitute for me occasionally, and I will continue to have that conflict, so I'd rather step down from it. And I will speak in members' matter about a project that's going on that I'm still going to commit to for that. But I think it's a wonderful opportunity for a board member to step up to this. I think it's great if you can make that meeting time.
I can do it.
Oh, okay. I was going to also say I would do it, but if you want to do it, Mrs. Rosario, what I was going to suggest is that perhaps we can co-do it, that there can be-
That would be wonderful.
Like, I'm happy to be an alternate, and, you know, and we can work it out that sometimes one or the other goes. I'm happy to do that.
That would be wonderful.
And that minimizes the burden on one person, but allows two people to participate.
Okay, thank you. All right. Approval of appointment of a citizen to the Indian River County Metropolitan, the MPO, County Citizen Advisory Committee for Transportation and an alternate for this voting position. I don't think we have, we don't have a lot of choices here yet. If I, if I may, can I postpone this decision until the next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely, and we will market the position and bring back additional names for consideration.
Okay, thank you. The next one is the approval of appointment of a citizen to the Indian River County School Planning Citizens Oversight Committee, our interlocal agreement for public school planning for this voting position.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second.
Okay. And let's see.
Me.
The, Mr. Robinson evidently was, has been in that role. And the notes say that the meeting was canceled this year, so there's not been a meeting for a while. So what's the best way to handle?
Sorry, I made the motion, so may I speak to the motion?
Yes.
Okay, he stated that he's willing to serve again, correct? Yes.
Is that, oh, all right. So Mr. Robinson has agreed to serve. He's requested that there be an alternate available if he is unable. So can I have a motion that, for Mr. Robinson to serve?
I'll make a motion. I did.
And I already, that was already moved.
Yeah, we're to the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then an alternate?
We don't have a volunteer for an alternate. That's a citizen position.
I guess if, for some reason, he can't, is there a manner in which, is he, would he notify you, Nancy? All right, and you can recruit one of us.
Yeah, so Mr. Robinson can, he'll notify me if he's unable to attend the meetings. If you wish, as a board collectively, to select another citizen to be an alternate, or you approach somebody, or someone has approached you that is interested in being an alternate, then we can name that person as a secondary person, and then I would contact that person to attend the meeting.
So we could market that as well as the other one?
Absolutely.
And is it, is it acceptable that, let's suppose we didn't have a citizen, that one of us, like me, could attend as an alternate?
No, no. Mr. Barefoot, this particular position is established by statute, the Value Adjustment Board. The school board places one of its members on the board, and we're required to place a citizen on the board. So by statute, the citizen position must be held by someone who's not a school board member.
All right, but, and Mr. Robinson is holding that position, but if he cannot attend, then we just don't have anybody attending, unless we can find someone.
Yes, sir. Either the seat would be empty for a particular meeting, or if you wish to appoint another citizen as the alternate, you can certainly take that action in the future.
Okay, but your point is that one of us cannot.
Correct, sir.
Got it.
So can we make, do we have to make a motion then to advertise for an alternate for this?
Yes.
Does it have to be a motion, or can you just do it?
Certainly, the superintendent with Ms. Esplin can advertise for more interest.
Thank you.
All right, approval of appointment of a citizen to the County Commission's Value Adjustment Board for this voting position.
I move to accept Mr. Heckman for the County Commission's Value Adjustment Board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terry. Next, approval of appointment to County Commission's Value Adjustment Board, one committee member and one alternate for this voting position. Last year, Mrs. Rosario was the committee member. Mrs. Justice was the alternate.
I can keep it.
You keep it? Anyone interested in being?
Can I ask when they meet?
They've been pretty flexible. No particular day. I would get a phone call or an email that says, are you available, you know, next Monday, next Tuesday, or two months from now, Monday, Tuesday. They really only have met.
They really only have met once in the spring, once in the fall, and during COVID, we met in the summer. And they'll only add meetings, sorry, Mar, they'll, Dr. Schiff, they'll add meetings if there are other things that they have to vote on.
I'll be the alternate.
All right, so we have Mrs. Rosario and Dr. Jones as the alternate. And I have a motion to approve those appointments.
Make a motion?
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of appointment for the Workforce Housing Committee for the School District of Indian River County. We have, I, I think this is a pretty important effort. I know you've been on this one for a while and I'm pretty familiar with the challenges. I spoke with a couple of, actually with someone this morning about this. There's a list of, and I can't find it, there's a list of people that have volunteered.
It's in here.
It's attached to the board.
There's.
Oh, I see it, I'm sorry.
There's eight people who have volunteered, is there any reason not to move approval for all of them? I move approval to accept the eight applicants for the Workforce Housing Committee.
I'll second.
There's only five positions and two alternates, so somebody.
No, may I?
Yes.
Two of those people that are on here are superintendent.
District.
District people, right. So if you'll look, the positions, the five positions, I believe that we vote on are the people that are community members, correct? And then the two others are school board employees that the superintendent has, has asked to be put on there.
That is correct.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, so they could be the alternates.
No, they represent the district and then the other five represent the community in their varying capacities. So we're voting on accepting the five from the community and the superintendent has chosen the two that he would like to appoint to the committee.
Mr. Barefoot, may I?
Yes, you may.
There are eight names here and I don't understand why there's five positions because we didn't specify that it only had to be five people on this committee or, and two appointees. We didn't specify seven, correct, board members?
I don't recall.
Okay.
If you'd like me to clarify, when we had, when we had the conversation, it was a member from banking, a community at large, construction industry, obviously the district staff, and we also wanted the perspective of a new teacher, that is the one addition, as well as real estate. And we have two individuals from real estate. So the individuals identified here meet the letter of the intent of the conversation to begin this committee, who will meet four times throughout the year and then bring a port, their first initial report no later than June, following the June meeting.
Sorry. I amend the motion to expand the membership of the Workforce, what is it, Workforce Housing Committee and to accept all the applicants.
I, I believe that's your first motion. Yeah, if he, he can read the first part, I think it's in there. I don't think you have to amend your motion.
Okay.
So, this is the approval of these, of the appointment of the Workforce Housing Committee for the School District of Indian River County and these are the seven people, so the.
It says the final decision of the amount of people serving on this committee are, so we can choose.
So we want to put, are the district representatives officially members of this committee?
Yes.
Yes, all right, so we, so the final committee are eight members.
I believe we have to vote on that.
And, all right. And we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I ask a clarification of the board attorney?
Sure.
Okay, we just voted on the number of applicants, is it okay that we move on? Or do we have to vote, accepting the resumes of those people that have applied?
The motion that I heard from Dr. Schiff was to approve the applicants.
Okay, that's fine, I just want to make sure, because I'm here, on the script it says that we had to decide on the number first. So that's why I was asking. May I make a comment though about the committee?
Sure.
Because you're right, I did ask for this committee to be formed. Thank you, board members, for approving this. I'm very excited about the diversity of people that are on this committee. Thank you to Ms. Hoffa and Mr. Seymour for really working hard to get a good group of people that are willing to serve. And nice to see that the director of, one of the directors of Habitat for Humanity is serving on this. I find it very interesting, a lot of people think that Habitat for Humanity only builds one type of project, but I think you'll be amazed at the other things that they do, so I'm excited about this.
All right, the next board appointment is approval of appointment as district school board's legislative liaison for this non-voting position. Mrs. Berenberg, you did this, you were nice enough to do this last year, do you want to continue?
Yes, but I'd like to make a comment about it.
Sure.
I did it last year because I obviously go to Tallahassee at least once or twice to visit my husband. He works in Tallahassee during session and so therefore I was not charging the board for my travel expenses. So we didn't have any charge for, for mileage or for hotel because we just didn't have the budget for it, which I'm sure we don't have the budget for this year as well. There was some conversation at our last meeting about whether or not we should go out and look for lobbyists or things like that. I have made, have made a suggestion to Dr. Moore about that. It was a lot of work to track bills and give information to the board. I am not a lobbyist, I did my best at doing that. But I'm willing to go up there, not charge us, and what I did is sat in education meetings for a couple of days and listened and gave us updates so we know what was going on. But I really feel like lobbyists, lobby groups can, or associations, can give you some inside information and also working as a board, a small school district board, with other boards gives us more power, if that's what we want, instead of just one person going up there in, in Tallahassee. But it is totally upon this board what you would like.
You know, it's an interesting point you make. I'm on the board of a public high school in Vermont and in Vermont, there's a number of, not a large number of schools and they're spread all over the place. And sometimes the state legislature in Vermont presents a challenge, particularly for school choice. And the, the schools banded together and hired a lobbyist who tracks all the bills, interacts with all the important people and it's really worked quite well. So your suggestion is, is a good suggestion. The question is, how do we go about partnering with other school districts and then share, identifying a person and then sharing the, you know, the cost of that?
May I make a suggestion? I'd like to move to accept Mrs. Berenberg as the legis, the school board's legislative liaison. That's the motion. I'd also like to suggest then that we have this conversation about a lobbyist at a future board discussion meeting. I don't think it's something we can resolve tonight.
I agree, thank you.
All right, so, so we have a motion. You've made a motion for Mrs. Berenberg, correct?
Oh, I guess I don't have to move on this, is, was that, maybe that's not a moving thing. It is a moving thing, okay, yes, I moved, except Mrs. Berenberg is the legislative liaison.
Second?
Second.
Dr. Jones? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:19.